Hi, everyone. I want to call to order the June 22 regular school committee meeting at 7:02 PM via Zoom. Want to say that we are recording. I have a few things to say before we get our meeting underway, so please bear with me as I talk a lot. I am going to start off with a statement from the administration. Over the past three years, members of our district leadership team and school committee have been subjected to an increasing level of threatening language. Until recently, these threats were limited to emails and social media posts. On May 25, the school committee and district administration team received a serious threat on Facebook from someone in the Mascoomic community. This incident is being investigated by local police and the Essex County District Attorney's office. On June 7, a member of our district leadership team received a threat from someone in the Mascoomic community at their home through US Mail. This incident is currently under investigation by local and federal law enforcement, so I'm unable to provide any more details. It's safe to say that our leadership team is frightened and troubled by this violation. As a result, our administrators have reported that they now feel unsafe at work and at home, and worry that they could be the next target if they say or do something to trigger whomever's business. Under normal circumstances, our superintendent and two assistant superintendents would not, would be present here for this meeting, but given the increasing level of threats, we've decided to not have them attend. Thank you. Now, for my opening comments, I wanted to first say congratulations to the Masco class of 2022. I had the pleasure and honor to hand them their diplomas. It was so heartwarming seeing their smiles. They had a good mixture of joy, fear, pride, sadness, but mostly excitement. You could see their motors turning. We're out of here. Thank God I'm done. Man, I'm gonna miss my friends. Crap, what if I don't like my roommate at college, et cetera, et cetera? Such a look of pride filled the audience as they watched their, quote, "children" cross the stage and get a token that symbolizes the closing of one door and the opening of the next. I hope these graduates can take good lessons with them as they head into their new adventures. Remember the good times, learn from the challenges, and I would be remiss if I didn't add in a good Ted Lasso quote, "Be curious and not judgmental. Ask the good questions, but don't jump to conclusions. See the good in people." And if you haven't watched the show, make sure you do so before heading your way. Next, I wanted to say that we do not want to be in Zoom meetings, and I do not want to make a habit of not including public comments. This committee has always respected what the community has to say, and that is not changing. That said, we cannot stand by while our committee and our administrators are harassed and now threatened. As a community, we need to come together and model for our children how we interact with each other, especially during difficult times. We need to understand and trust that we all want the same thing. We want our kids to be safe, physically and mentally healthy, and have a good education. Now, we may have differences of opinions as to how we arrive at those goals, but please understand that people who go into education are doing it for the kids. People who volunteer numerous hours per week are doing it for the kids. There are no conspiracies and no hidden agendas. There are also no secrets being kept unless it has to do with one of the prior stated goals of keeping our kids safe, or if it pertains to an open investigation. Unfortunately, we're unable to go into exactly what happened on May 13. Dr. Harvey laid out very clearly that he and his team made the wrong decision in not telling the community about the incident. He also told us that he will do better, and I think we have now seen their commitment to communication. That is not expected to change. This falls under the school committee's role of overseeing the superintendent. Also, the safety team got right to tightening up their security plan and improving the weaknesses identified. That has all been done by the administration, as it is their responsibility. The school committee will continue to devote our combined resources to the businesses to the business we're responsible for getting done, and there is a lot of work to be done. Over the next year, we hope to be able to see the strategic and capital plans be developed. We will be able to see the long-awaited pilot of a new schedule. We look forward to seeing the recovery of our students and staff from a pandemic that absolutely kicked every single person's butt, but we can't do this without everyone's support. So please, everyone, act like we are on the same team. Together, we're gonna get things done. Thank you.
So, to our agenda we go. First up, we have a field trip presentation, a visual presentation to Costa Rica that Senora, I'm waiting to pull it up, Sam Pietro Dave Piaceto has requested. This is hard. Okay, does anybody have any questions or motions, assuming that everybody has read through the material? Again, raise your hand if you want to talk. If you're not, if you can keep yourself unmute and you're a committee member, that's great. If not, then raise your hand. Looking like we have no comments. I would, oh. Terry? You were unmuted.
Okay, I was just wondering if, um, if this is the field trip that has happened in the past that is now being revived because of COVID. I think it is, but I just wanted to know if anyone knows that, knows the answer.
I do not know that. I haven't, I I haven't seen it in my time here.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'm also happy to make a motion to approve the request for the 12th grade Spanish field trip to Costa Rica.
I'll second it.
Was that Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, so now if members could all raise your hands, then you're up at the top of my page and I can ask you to unmute and do a roll call. So Carolyn?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Terry?
She's muted again.
I'm asking you to unmute.
But now you're going back and forth.
Okay, I'm stopping. We're gonna, we'll come back to you, Terry. Dominic?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Bill?
Thank you for unmuting me. Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Patty? Patty looks frozen, doesn't she?
Yeah, she does. She's coming, coming back.
Terry, did I come back and call on you?
Not yet. Um, yes.
Okay. Patty, I'm trying to unmute you, but I think you're unmuted. Patty? Yes, I'm unmuted, yes. Okay, let's see if we can keep our mutes off for the near future, unless you have to mute it.
Did you get Costa?
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that, though, because I'll need that kind of support as people jump around. Okay. Onto the field trip, or the field trip to Barcelona, Spain. So anyway, everybody's going to Costa Rica. Have a great time. That all was unanimous. So this one is a band trip to Spain, which, how amazing, for next April. And I believe, to Terry's question, they alternate where they go, one international and one, oh, look, there it is, on page three of it. Looks like starting like in whenever, they do New York Disney, New York International, and New York Disney, New York International. So, um, that looks amazing. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns about that, or do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve?
I second it.
Okay. Here we go again. Terry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Trevor? Say you?
Yeah.
Tasha? Yes. Zilly?
Yes, and I just want to say it's also based on Mr. Ocock's tradition, history of vetting his trips, because the other one had, had options and explanations. This one didn't.
Okay. Thank you. So all approved trip to Barcelona. Okay. Letter E, master teacher recommendation. These teachers, as you can see, Mike wrote, "I'm pleased to recommend the following teachers be appointed to master teacher status beginning in the 2022-22-23 school year." This is a bump along the, it's like a stipend to get the master teacher designation that comes with an increase or stipend pay for this. So I'll just read the names out loud. Dana Fowler, Erica Donovan, Leah Stewart, Allison Lassise, Brett Ordway, April Cochran, Erin Evans, Ryan Quadros, Ivy, Eric Artus, Jason Tierney, Kim Marini, James Masiak. There's information there about from the teacher's contract regarding the master's teachers' evaluation process. Congratulations. They all must have completed something to get them this designation, so. Do
I'll make a motion to approve.
Trevor's making that motion. Who was that?
Zilly.
Zilly seconding. Okay, we're gonna go. Bill?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Natasha's a yes. So, congratulations to those teachers who are now considered masters teachers. Okay. Superintendent update. I want to see if what I, so Mike concluded a link to his blog for the social, for the security update. I just want to see if what I have here. Yes, so I'm gonna just read it out loud for everybody. Since his last communication on June 2, they have concluded the review of the incident on May 13. To date, they have taken the following steps as a result of this review. They have reminded all faculty and staff not to prop open doors. They have had their campus security personnel remove any rocks, sticks, wedges, or any other items that could be used to prop a door from all doorways. They've reminded all faculty and staff to keep vigilant, to report anything out of the ordinary, to wear their ID badges, and to make sure all visitors follow the proper procedure for entering the school. They have arranged for a second police officer from Boxer to Topsfield to patrol outside the building every day since June 1. This officer is in addition to our regular school resource officers, who is on campus daily during school hours. They have developed and implemented a new communications plan around school safety-related events. This plan includes sending messages regarding regularly scheduled drills, any called shelter in place or lockdowns, and any other out-of-the-ordinary events. The Masco community has received several communications this month as part of this plan. They've also agreed to more regular communication with the local police chiefs. They are continuing to enjoy a productive working relationship with the police and fire departments of Boxer and Middleton and Topsfield, and have worked with these public safety departments to develop comprehensive school crisis response plans, which include regularly scheduled ALIS, active shooter, lockdown, and fire drills. These plans are frequently reviewed and practiced by our school under the guidance of our public safety departments and school-based safety committees. We are also grateful to have the support of dedicated school resource officers, AKA SROs, from Boxer and Topsfield, designed to work in our schools every day. In addition, we have full-time district staff security, closed-circuit video monitoring, and visitor management systems in place to help ensure the safety of our school community. We're gonna continue to do our best to keep students, staff, and visitors to our school safe, and will implement any other measures as we deem necessary. Does anybody want to say anything? About that?
I'll jump in and say something.
Okay.
So, are you gonna, so if I have a question, are you now gonna be answering for Harvey, or?
I am probably not.
One thing, I just, I know we've talked about it briefly, but I hope you can incorporate what I talked about earlier on about how Middleton talks with Essex Tech to add their buses to our evacuation plan, because our buses are contracted out to North Running Transportation, and they have so many buses just sitting on standby ready for that. Am I muffled?
No.
Okay, I'm getting a little feedback, but that's fine.
Oh, I guess I can hear that. Clear.
So, yeah, I just want to keep that on the horizon, that we look into doing that with the elementary schools I know are looking into it, so.
I know you said that in our meeting. Did you email that?
No.
Maybe just send an email to Mike, just as a reminder that you said that, as you say, to keep it on the horizon.
Right, Morrison Scott, I think his first name is, was in talks with Essex Tech, so hopefully we can jump in with him on that.
Yeah.
Does anyone else remember Mike saying that he was already talking to Scott about that?
Yeah, yeah, he did.
He did, okay.
I just wanted an update.
No, it's good.
Yeah, it's good that you raised it, yeah. Carolyn, I just asked to unmute you if you actually wanted to be unmuted.
I do. Can I talk?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I just wanted to say for context, like for anyone listening into this meeting, that we did have an executive session last week where, I know I'm clearly not gonna disclose what we talked about, because that was the purpose, but one of the reasons we had that session was to discuss security and I didn't time it, but I think maybe there was about 45 minutes of discussion. We, the committee members had a lot of questions, and I think we got a lot of answers from Mike at that meeting, which, now I'll just speak for myself, made me feel, along with the communications that he's made to the community, that this is like a top priority for them, and which I never doubted. I know that security has always been very important to them. I also appreciated that Mike apologized for not immediately disclosing what happened earlier in May, and I think he's made the appropriate changes to correct that going forward. And one of the other things we talked about was the new security person that's coming on this summer, and I requested that, that point, that once that person gets in, gets their feet on the ground, understands Masco, you know, to have them get back to us on whether they need any more resources, because budget is where we come in here to help and to let us know what their conclusions are on the school security, and if they see anything else that they want to add to, let us know. And I felt like everybody was on the same page with that.
Thanks, Carolyn. That's a really good point to put out there. Much like other leading people in our school, once they come in and they get their feet wet, they've come up with a plan of where they see that we could do better. It's always nice to have new eyes on something. So appreciate that, and I believe that the timing was so that we could get it in time for budget season. Terry?
Thanks. I just wanted to just add that I also appreciated Dr. Harvey's apology, which I think was heartfelt, and I think that, you know, as a parent, I appreciate that, and I think it was sincere. I also wanted to just add for, for the community that in that executive session, we were able to hear more about the, the very many layers of security that exist at the school that, you know, aren't disclosed, because then everybody would know that they exist, but I would say what Mike outlined in his report is sort of the tip of an iceberg of security, and, and I appreciate, you know, why we can't talk about the details publicly, but I think, I think that people in our community should feel that the school is well well-protected as well as it can be in today's times. That's it.
Thanks, Terry. Trevor?
I just, I don't know where I should bring this up, but since we're talking about security and all that, I just had a question, because I was under the impression that there was, the threat wasn't like, we could have had the meeting and the threat would have been, there was no substantive, like, I don't know how to put this. Like, our lives would not have been at risk if we had our meeting in person. It was more a pause to reflect and all that. And so I'm wondering, like, are we in danger right now? Is that why this is on Zoom? Because in your statement, it sounded a lot different from the statement you released a week ago, and then Dr. Harvey was here last week, and now the only thing that's changed is we have the public watching us this week. So I don't know how this threat makes it so the administration can't come onto a Zoom and if we're in danger as a committee.
Well, I mean, we've been threatened, so there is that. I mean, and people don't seem to be, you know, having problems with the fact that we've been threatened. I think as humans, we should all be very disturbed by that fact. But it's one of the, you know, ELT who received something through the mail threatening them, and they don't understand why. So everything that they say is a possible target to have something be said against, now, again, and, and now we have people who don't feel safe at work or at home, which is really disturbing. Like, I don't think that's the way that the community want to act towards the people that are running our schools. So, you know, we're here tonight because we have business to do, and, and we will continue to do the business that we need to do. We're not trying to, you know, stop our business. But that, there was a lot going on that day that was very imminently threatening, I would say, but not towards the kids in school. Yeah, you can continue, Trevor. Oh, I have unmuted, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I, I said it, but it was in executive session, and I 100% don't agree that anyone should have been threatened or anything like that. I don't want that notion to get thrown across there, but I just think our teachers have felt unsafe in that building ever since this incident happened. Students have felt unsafe, and here we are seven weeks later, letting the public get a tiny glimpse at the security situation, so that's just something to think about.
Well, I mean, I would ask you what, what what we could have done differently, because we're not in charge of the safety. The school is doing that. They have increased their safety. So there's not a lot more for us to do here, other than, as like Carolyn had mentioned, to be supporting any new safety measures with dollars. So, and when those come up to us, we will definitely be doing that, but, you know, we've heard from people. I haven't actually heard from teachers or students, but we've definitely heard from the community.
And I'd just say that our hands weren't necessarily completely tied. I know, you know, but I requested the emergency meeting, which I'll quote it, is warrants a sudden, of the emergency meeting is because of a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding immediate action, which in our case would have been communication. So that, to me, just warranted, the whole situation would have warranted an emergency meeting, and we didn't get that, but I don't want to take up everyone's time. I just wanted to.
Well, I think we did get the communication. I will just add that we got emergency communication, and we've got improved communication going forward, because that was urgently asked for, that, that was a problem, and it's been admitted that it was a problem, apologized for, and I hope everyone feels that it's been improved upon going forward. So. And you, Bill?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up something that Trevor said, that that staff and students don't feel safe in the building. That, that isn't what I've heard. So I'm just curious what you've heard that's been different than that and to what extent.
Did you want Trevor to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, as you know, I graduated a year ago. I have
Well, we're talking about the last several weeks, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but I have numerous connections within the building, because I graduated a year ago, as in friends just sending me a text, or I see them one weekend, like, "Oh, did you see this? Like, there was another incident at school. There's another incident." Saying, "I just don't feel safe here anymore," and the teachers echo the same thing, so. And when there's two leaks out of the teachers, two leaks in almost three weeks, I think there's a mistrust within the teachers to the administration.
What? What was that?
I don't understand that.
Send to the parents the police report, and then the teachers sent out the schedule. So that's, in my mind, two leaks in two weeks. So I think there's a breakdown in trust amongst the teachers towards the administration.
So, so two teachers out of how many we have?
No. Okay.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing that, that, you know, it certainly says something. I'm not certain that that's we're drawing the broad conclusion that there's a lack of trust. I mean, there's a lot of ways you could prove the lack of trust. I'm not sure those two particular things would be, would be how it would be.
You all set, Bill?
Yeah.
Carolyn, your hand went down, but were you gonna say something?
I was gonna let Melissa go before me, but then she put her hand down.
Okay.
I guess I just wanted to speak to the request for an emergency meeting, and I do want to acknowledge that, you know, certainly, like, some of the information we heard was scary, and as a parent, you know, I understand that people are very wary and want to know what's going on, so I don't want to under I just want everyone to know that I, and I think all of us appreciate, definitely appreciate that. The, I just would draw an analogy for when COVID kind of hit on, we had a school, so I was in the The, I just would draw an analogy for when COVID kind of hit on, we had a school, so I was in the committee then. So we had a school committing, meeting on Wednesday of that week, and then the school was closed on Friday temporarily, because of the pandemic. And we did not have an emergency meeting. And I can tell you, certainly, obviously, everybody was extremely alarmed then. I'm not going to compare it to this, I mean, you can make your own comparison, whether this is, you know, less alarming than that or more. Uh, they're both alarming situations, but in both cases, having a school committee meeting was not going to be the best way to address the issue. It was to allow the superintendent and his staff to figure out how they are going to run the school, given what is going on. And then, once they figured that out, or at least attempted it, they met with us. A similar situation with the security situation. Uh, we, we are not responsible for the day-to-day operations of the school. Parents are not responsible for the day-to-day operations of the school, because we've, we've all, they have elected us, and we've hired Mike to hire good people to, that are qualified. Uh, all of us have different skill levels. But I, I know I do not have a security, a degree in security or any experience, and I, and I trust that the school will figure it out. Our role, as Tasha said, is supervising the superintendent and evaluating at how he does all those things that I just spoke to you about, and I feel that we are doing that with the meetings that we have. I, I guess I will say, I am disappointed that Mike isn't at this meeting tonight. I, you know, there's a, there's a lot going on right now in everybody's world, so I'm, I'm not going to push on that too much, I hope that they join us again soon.
Thank you. Me too, Carol.
So I have two thoughts, just one I wanted to mention, I want to make sure that we're not conflating the, the incident with the school, with the threats towards individuals, and this, and the school's reaction to safety for our students and staff, and the school committee's response to threats towards individuals. I feel like those are two very distinct things, and so the responses have been different. So I just wanted to mention that, and then as far as people feeling safe in the building, again, I mean, many of us have family members in the building every day, and our protocols are that if, if there's concerns from people in the building, there's recourse for them to address it within their building, and if they're not feeling that they're getting the response, the appropriate response, there's ways kind of up the ladder to cut, get there. So if these leaks to me actually are extremely problematic and unprofessional, and I'm curious to know if anyone's seen anything that positive come from either one. The schedule one, just to get that out of the way, was very disheartening for me, because students who, for whom a change like that is a really big deal. It was a disservice to them for someone to leak that, because those students needed to be shown that in a supportive setting, where there's people who could answer questions, explain, give context, the teachers had some context, but the leak had no context, so I'm disappointed about that. So if we're thinking along those lines, an appropriate recourse for a teacher who's concerned about that report is to speak to their direct supervisor, if that's not satisfactory, go above, go above, go above, until eventually maybe it would come to the school committee chair. I'm wondering whether this approach of circumventing that process and inviting parents to make noise about it, as opposed to coming directly through that chain, has provided any better result than what might have come through the appropriate channels? And I'm also wondering if anyone here feels that the response thus far from the administration has been inadequate in terms of specifically apologizing and then addressing the security and safety concerns using the professional staff that they partner with from the tri-town and employee within the district to ensure the safety of our students and staff.
I think you're asking a question.
Does anybody feel that something should, would have been done differently, or that, that, that was not inadequate response?
Melissa, that's maybe a response for you, I would agree that, that it was an adequate response. Delayed to start off with, but since for, since going forward, it has been adequate.
I think, I think we can all agree, and a mistake was made in not telling the community about it. But there's no doubt in our minds that it should have been done, but when it, you know, when we found out about it, it was rectified. But again, everyone involved, and I say again, because this is what I think to my, in my head on a normal basis, the people involved in decision makings are not robots, they are human beings who took information and had to process it in a way, that doesn't make it, it just makes it a lapse in perhaps judgment, but the follow-up, I believe, was very adequate. And I think we cannot fault people for being human, and, and it's a human process, and at the time, there was no danger, and I think there's many of us on this committee who have kids in the school currently. So there's, there, as a parent, I was thankful that we have our security in place and that it worked. So I, I agree, the communication could have been better, but the response ultimately was adequate.
Terry? Not on the end, sorry.
Sorry, that was my fault, um, I just wanted to, I agree with what Zili and Melissa just said, and I, I just wanted to quickly address the question about the emergency meeting. I can completely understand, you know, the urge to want to have an emergency meeting, you know, we've faced a lot of, you know, troubles in the just two years that I've been on this committee, and there's certainly been times when I wish that, you know, we could get together and talk about it, and, you know, and have, you know, many discussions with the community, but in, in my opinion, there was no emergency at that moment. You know, the, the emergency situation that we're talking about had happened, I don't know, two weeks before that. Um, we didn't know about it, and that was, you know, that was an error in, you know, we said in judgment um, on, on Dr. Harvey's part, I think, which has been, you know, addressed and, and stuff, but there was no, there was no emergency at that moment, and so that's why I was comfortable with the decision not to call an emergency meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You all good with that? Oh, Dominic.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I am upset that Dr. Harvey isn't with us, but I understand, that's, that's the first thing. There's so much, as far as the emergency meeting, I think we have to look at it from a different perspective. The, by us meeting, it shows that, you know, we're aware, and I think maybe the perspective would have been from the people that, you know, because we met, it would have given them the sense, the feeling that we were on top of it. Not to say that we weren't, obviously we were, but I think a lot of times, it's all on how it's, you know, how they perceive us. I mean, this is, you know, between social media and everything. So I think, I guess I'm just trying to play devil's advocate, and I can see the other side. So in that sense, you know, I could see, you know, a benefit for that, just from them knowing that the people that they entrust, you know, got together, talked, discussed, whatever, whether it was executive session, whatever. So that's, you know, that's the only thing I think really, um, and as far as this, I mean, you know, hindsight is, we're all talking about something, you know, after it happened, we could have done this, we should have done that. You know, it's easy, you know, hindsight is 2020, it's easy to, to say all these things, but, um, you know, I, I, you know, I have a child there, and, you know, as Carolyn said, from a parent's perspective, I'm very sensitive to those, to those, those feelings of fear, and again, the national news headlines obviously did not help, and that's why we're here. So I think now, how do we move forward? And how do we, as parents, as school committee members, you know, as residents of our respective communities, how do we make this better? How do we, how do we, how do we put these flames, if you will, out that have caused all this emotion on social media, these threats, all this? Because honestly, all of this is just bringing out the stupid in people, and that's my, you know, my personal opinion. Okay, there's no reason for this, I don't agree with any of it, but, and I know this might not be a popular statement, at the end of the day, the, and again, I don't agree with anything that's, that's happened with these threats, but the reason why all this nonsense is coming out is because a mistake, an initial mistake was made, granted, apologized for and everything. But that does not excuse anybody for these, to these acts, and, you know, sending things to their homes and all that, by no way, shape, or form. So moving forward, what's the next step? I'm done. With my statement.
Thank you, Dominic, that's a good question. Costa.
Yeah, I think you, when you, you deal with, you know, an unusual situation, when you deviate from your norms, you almost make it worse. In the reaction of people, and if their inability to express themselves in the normal course, and that creates a higher level of anxiety. So we've deviated from our normal course, which I don't think was the best way to do things within this context.
Understood. Bill?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted to, response to what Dominic said about sort of, you know, what do we do next? Yeah, I was reading through the, the written superintendent's report that we were provided. That was Mike's school security update. And I guess I want to ask the committee, not just Dominic, but you know, it's been reading through that, was, was there anything that seemed missing? Or that was inappropriate for, or let's try.
Sorry, what, what are you asking?
So Dominic said, you know, what do we do next, where do we go from here? And I, 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 I thought that Mike had attempted to answer that question in the superintendent's report to the school committee. And, and his updating laid out the steps that, that they had taken. So I'm asking the committee, does anyone feel that that is missing something, or it includes something that isn't helpful?
Uh, did I, yeah, I got you.
Uh, no, no, I didn't mean, I didn't, as far as my statement, I wasn't trying to suggest that something was missing, I just, I guess it was more of a way, I just want to, I don't know if you guys feel like this, I just don't want, I don't want to lead from behind, I want us to get ahead of it, so that if we can, I, I just, you know, try to keep these things, obviously, we can't control everything. I just, it was more of a, just a statement, not, not a statement in saying that something is missing from that report. Just as a statement, as a body, a committee, how do we, how do we write the shit, just keep, stay on course, and, and, you know, make the repairs we need to, as suggested by and implemented by the superintendent, uh, by the principals and, and whatnot, so yeah, no, it wasn't, it wasn't to say something was missing.
And, and, I mean, it's interesting, like, you know, we're seeing the results now of this improved communication plan. And back to what Trevor was saying about people not feeling safe, like, we have definitely, I mean, heightened the anxiety of every person who has a loved one in that school by alerting every single, you know, incident that happens. It's, it's, it's not a great way to live, for sure. I mean, I think it's good, because I hope in time, and this to Dominic's question, I hope in time that trust can be built and restored. But, you know, right now, we're, it, it is, it is anxiety provoking. There, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on around us in the world, and now we're, we're hearing about, you know, pretty benign events happening in our school that aren't cause for anxiety, but every time you get an alert, I think just the fact that it's an alert, it, it creates that concern. So, Bill, I think you wanted to comment back.
Yeah, just, just real quickly, that I think, you know, as we're trying to move forward, you know, from this and learn and, and all that, you know, when, when you lay out, here's what we're gonna do, our response to that probably shouldn't be, well, tell us what you're gonna do. I just did, and when we, and when we do, when, when that is our response, it, 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 I think it undermines the public's competence in what the administration is doing. So if what they've said are their next steps in their response to this, to this, to this situation, you know, we should aggressively examine those things, and if we think that some are right, some are wrong, there's big stuff missing, we absolutely should be, be all over that. But we should be injecting into the, 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 the community conversation here, that, okay, the administration made a mistake, they've owned it, here's what they're doing next, let's discuss, or discuss, you know, the step, the steps they've taken to, to prevent this from happening again, and for making improvements and all that, and, 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 you know, let's discuss whether we think that's enough. I think that's, that's what we, we need to be sure that we're doing to, you know, let the community know that that's what they did.
I wasn't sure if Dominic was responding or not, but I think I want to hear from Patty.
Um, I just wanted to jump in on several of the comments made, I, I think, you know, we're talking about a lot of different pieces to what happened, we're talking about two different things, as Zili pointed out, the threat to the staff, which in my opinion are unacceptable under any circumstances. Um, but we're also talking about the incident May, and the response or lack thereof to that initially. And I, I think what's hard, and, and I try to get, you know, kind of take the perspective of others as much as, you know, having my own viewpoint, and I think what's hard is the not knowing, and, you know, being on the committee, we're privy to information that, you know, the public isn't necessarily getting the same exact level of detail. But that being said, in those few weeks following that incident, when I found out later on, as everyone did, I, I had a similar feeling of, well, what's happening, why don't we know about this, those things? So I think it's a relatable feeling or response to feel angry or anxious or things like that in those moments when you don't have all the pieces, you don't have all the information. So I just, I just want to acknowledge that and validate those feelings of, you know, some distrust that, that we're, it's going to take a long time to repair. And I, you know, I hope that in future meetings, you know, we have, you know, plenty of time where the public can kind of voice their comments or their concerns, we certainly have heard through several community members from, through email, and some in person, just in passing, but I, you know, we have the community relations subcommittee in place, and I'm hoping that that will be a platform that folks will feel comfortable kind of having an open feedback discussion as well, not necessarily about this specific incident, but going forward, looking ahead to next year. But I think it comes down to communication, I, I, we can have, you know, a list of 500 things that we have for security, but, you know, if we don't feel that we can trust one another and that we're reliable reporters, it's going to make the job really tough to do. So I just, I think it's important for the community to know, we're, we're asking questions as a committee, and, you know, we are playing the role of, of holding folks accountable to do the job that we've asked them to do.
Thanks Patty. Costa?
By deviating from our norm, we have made our job of rebuilding trust harder. You know, this, in my mind, there's no two ways, you know, around this. You know, you don't get through something by deviating from your norm. You know, if certain people felt unsafe being at the meeting that was scheduled for two weeks ago, fine, you can excuse them, you can move it to Zoom. But devi- you know, not having the meeting, not having public comment sends absolutely the wrong message in terms of dealing with the perception of mistrust.
Thank you. I'm unmuting you, Melissa. Terry, I think your hand was up before, are you?
I'm okay for right now, yeah. I, I have a thing I want to say, but I'm not sure if it's gonna be helpful or not, so I'll let Melissa go first.
Okay, cuz then I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the, I think, after that. So if you want to come in for the last comment, I'll hold you to that.
All right.
Okay.
I just want to respond to Costa. And Costa, I agree that we deviated from the norm, but I don't think we were operating under normal such, under normal conditions. The level of communication that was being sent, the disrespectful communication, the anger that was all directed at a committee who has no control over the operations of the school except through oversight of the school committee, of the superintendent. So, I think that the threats and everything, I think it was compounded. And I don't think, I, I honestly don't think the public commu- public comments at a meeting like this is going to help because they, we have been afforded, people in the public are afforded the opportunity to contact us, and plenty of people have. So I just want to put that on record, that I love to hear from our community, but I also would love the respect of the community for all of us, for our administration, for our teachers, and for our students.
Melissa, just to piggyback on that, it's kind of the design of having an extended discussion forum, I'm not exactly sure what the name of it is, at the beginning of the Community Relations Subcommittee meeting next week, given that we will have had this discussion now in public. So, people can digest what they've heard through this and then have new comments, because at the beginning of this meeting, where public comment would have been, it would have been what we are hearing up until this point. So, that was part of it. But, I also was trying to combine two meetings into one. And for the sake of time, we're gonna move forward. So, Terry, did you have a last comment on security?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, it's hard to follow Melissa, cuz I agree with everything which, that she said. But I think we also just, I try to keep in mind the scale of a problem. And I think, you know, this is a problem that affected everybody, because, you know, we all have family members, as we've said, or friends or loved ones at the school. That's why we're doing this job. But I think we have to be really careful to think about the role of social media in amplifying voices and ideas, sometimes good information, sometimes false information. And I think, you know, there are a thousand, I think-ish, families at Masco, you know, in the Masco community. And the number of emails that we've gotten is pretty small, honestly. And the number of people who are at this meeting, and the number of people that we hear from regularly is pretty small. So I'm, I'm not saying that everyone is not concerned about this, but I didn't feel the level of, I felt the level of threat and, you know, just, you know, unhelpful commentary was, that, that was felt by our administration was some, you know, that we need to think about that. But I, I do think we have to just be really careful that we're not making assumptions based on commentary on social media. That's all.
Thank you for adding that. I think that's important for all of us to remember. Our official ways of getting in touch with us are through email or face-to-face or phone. So, anyway, I'm gonna change over now to number two in the superintendent's with the school's schedule. I am gonna preface it, going back to what Zilly said, that it was very unfortunate the way this information did get out. Because it was an extremely thoughtful approach to the schedule, which I'm gonna go into. That was all kind of shattered by that. The administration, the, the pilot, the schedule committee had sent out the information prior to their meeting, explaining the schedule to the staff on a Friday. And then they had a staff meeting on Monday. And they shared the information, because like professionals, that's what you do. So that your people are prepared for what you're about to present. And by sharing it with students, was so unprofessional and unfortunate for exactly the reasons that Zilly said. It caused chaos. I know, I, I care less about the chaos it ca- it caused the parents than the kids, because that's why we're here. And, and I think then the parents' confusion and chaos also created more on, on the kids. So it's really unfortunate, because this was an amazing process that we saw get worked through a great committee. So, with that little luxury comment, I will go into what Mike wrote about it. In September 2022 and 23, Masco Middle and High Schools will be implementing a pilot daily schedule. The schedule was developed by a Schedule Task Force made up of Masconomet faculty, administration, and support staff, who began their working by developing a list of priorities that they would like to see included in a new schedule. After looking at several different schedule models from our region, the Schedule Task Force chose a model that met the greatest number of identified priorities. The pilot schedule for 2223 includes a daily 36-minute flexible Masco block. Each class will meet four days per week, three meetings are 49 minutes per day, and the fourth is an extended 68-minute period. The pilot schedule contains a substantial increase in structured learning time for students as defined by Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The Schedule, Schedule Task Force will continue to meet next year to review feedback on the pilot schedule and make any necessary changes to the pilot based on this feedback. The middle and high school principals will be sending separate communications to student parents and staff regarding the pilot schedule this week. Not sure if it's happened yet, but there is more information in our agenda. There is a link to a whole document that has an FAQ section, talking about it. From listening to Mike and Jeff discuss the, the pilot, that are not the pilot, the committee, it was so heartening, heartwarming and heartening to see that they had this really large committee, working very positively together to build the schedule based on what was identified as neat. So, I, for one, was really excited about it. And I really appreciate the fact that they're considering it a pilot, because there will be some kind of feedback in, you know, that informs how the schedule gets changed or kept or whatever going forward. So it's not just, this is the new schedule, it is a pilot program. Anybody have any comments? Trevor?
There we go. Thank you. So, I completely agree with you that I appreciate that it's a pilot, leaving it open for communication down the line. I'm just thinking of the teachers here, how they have to, they're gonna have to, cuz the time on learning is different, cuz the wind block, DESI, or the M block, DESI considers time on learning, but for teachers, it's not really. So the time in the classroom is shorter per week. So, they're having to change their curriculum to now fit the same amount of information in the shortened time in the classroom per week. And then if it now changes again after the pilots, the whole situation evolves and people not, don't end up liking it, I'm just nervous for the teachers to have to then switch back, or, you know, what I'm trying to say. It'd be a lot for teachers, I think.
So remember that there were teachers, multiple teachers involved in the committee that, that designed this. So they had the teacher's impact, in- input into it, so.
Yes, and just to add to that, let's remember that this was made possible because of the, the new contract that we negotiated, that we recently completed negotiating with the teachers. So, so certainly, the specifics of this schedule were not a, a part of those negotiations, but the possibility of something like this happening was. And it was one of, one of, I think, everyone's desire based upon our experience early on of the pandemic, when we had that, that block. And it was so universally loved, that we, that both sides of negotiations worked hard to, to create more flexibility in, in the, in the contracts, so that this was possible. And the other point that I think is worth keeping in mind here is that no person or organization gets better without making changes. And, and fear of having to undo those changes will keep you from making them in the first place, it'll keep you from ever improving, and you will stagnate. So, so every individual and every organization has to try new things, see what works, improve upon it. And what doesn't work, you get rid of. And, and, you know, that's, you certainly, what you choose to implement, you, you do it after you've considered input from a variety of sources. So you think it's got a, a, a better than reasonable chance of actually working and sticking. But certainly, the fear of it not working can't prevent you from ever making changes, because you'll never get better at any of it.
Thank you. Any other comments on this?
I like that way of raising a hand.
I know. I thought I got you, but I, somebody popped into your place. There you go.
Good, okay. Given that I've been out of high school for a very long time. I'm just gonna ask, from what, from what I remember on, okay, so it is a pilot. So there'll be, there'll be a time period for this thing to kind of grow legs and see how it, you know, and obviously, maybe we're gonna get some feedback, or they're gonna collect feedback to see what works, what doesn't, and see how they can maneuver things. I, I'm guessing, is that, is that everybody's understanding, basically?
It's a pilot for the year.
Right, okay, okay. Cuz I was just, I don't know if Trevor made that point earlier, but I, I still have a reoccurring nightmare of being, of not being able to find my locker in high school. And that, it's not, not even, I swear to, honest to God, and it, it, it's funny. So, the time in between classes concerns me, given the size of the school and whatnot. And I'm, and it brought that dream back, and I can think about it. So, I just want to make sure there's recourse there and a way for people to get information back to the powers that be, to make the necessary changes, so we can keep all the good, get rid of the bad, and, you know, make it a little better, so it's, it's workable for Masco, that's all.
Um, along those lines, I don't have a schedule in front of me. In here that I can pop it up. But, when I was talking with Mike about that, I'm here, I can pop it up. So, three minutes is a short time between periods, obviously. But, the minute, the time where there's two minutes in between subject, in, in between classes are not, like, as structured. So like, one is between homeroom and block one, but I believe that homeroom is gonna be in block one, so there actually isn't any child travel time. And then I think the other one is like going to lunch. So, that isn't like a structured travel time, really. But the other ones are the three minutes. I, and, and Mike also talked about, about, you know, ways that teachers can be more flexible as to when kids come into classrooms, like having the do-nows on the board, so that you come down, you start doing it, wait till everybody's there. So, obviously, yes, you're gonna have to figure out how kids are gonna get into classrooms, like, on time. But, I think, you know, they'll receive that feedback if it's not working. So good? Dominic, you're good, right?
Very good.
Um, I, I just, you know, hope for you not to have that nightmare. Cuz I got it just following, trying to find places in Masco, but it's definitely not my strength. Okay, Zilly?
So, I, I think, I'm kind of also thinking about the earlier question of like, how do we move forward? And I feel like this is a great, in some ways, a good example of, you know, losing sight of the forest for the trees. Because there might be a couple of things that seem like negatives at this moment, looking, glancing at this. But I can, from what I've been hearing from people, and also observed in other districts with similar schedules to this proposed pilot, and the feedback over the last few years over very specific problems that were really hard to solve at Masconomet. You know, this solves a lot of those, and also it can't be perfect, because it's such an impossible puzzle. So I just want to take a minute to thank the task force that worked on this, because I know having grade seven through 12 share the cafeterias, and having the guidelines, guidance from DESI and the minutes, and the structure of our teacher contract, and all of the different demands and the needs for special ed accommodations, and the options on the table just get more and more and more limited for what you can do with the schedule. So I think this task force really worked their butts off, and I, I know that they took feedback from teachers and others, uh, uh, feedback from students on it. So I want to thank them for the effort that they put in, and for coming up with something that we can try. And we've been talking for a long time that it's time for some changes in how public schools do things, and I think this is a good opportunity for Masco to try something new, so just want to thank them. Doesn't have to be all negative all the time.
Right. To, and to, to reiterate, the, the contract, the whole, like, one of our biggest goals was settling that contract, was to increase flexibility, so that we could change the schedule. And we worked really, like, that was a large goal that we were able to meet to some extent. And, 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 you know, this was able to be result, to come from that. So as soon as the contract was settled, then the committee was able to start working on this. But there was even some discussion of this in the negotiations into like, what kind of schedules we could possibly be looking at, not like an actual figuring it out. Patty?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I just had a couple of questions, and I, maybe I missed it. And I don't know if you know this, Tasha, in talking with Dr. Harvey, but the flex locks, is it by, is it intended to be by appointment? Or is it gonna be kind of a drop-in? Has that been talked about?
I think that they're working on a, kind of an app that helps scheduling it. Because you don't want all the kids to go to one teacher at the same time. Or alternatively, if I'm avoiding completing my English test, and I say I want to go for science, then this English teacher can say, no, Tasha, you actually have to come here and finish the test. So that was why it's a little bit more structured than just a drop-in. Also, reading through this, I think, in the fact, the fa- FAQs, they talk about how every kid will be at a signed place, almost like a homeroom, where, where you report. Where where you report. So if you are somebody that doesn't need teacher support at that time. But I also believe that they're going to be adding more things in it. So one. One idea that we had tossed around a lot, I'm not sure in which committee, but um. You know, like the the NHS kids providing tutoring, like that can be during this. So you know, that. Like you can start bringing kids in. I know a certain eighth grade teacher always had high school um kids help her in um in mass. In ma- math for tutoring. So like she can start drawing from across the the whole district to um. To do stuff that just doesn't have to happen after school, but it does seem like it will be kind of scheduled. And and I did hear um that. They're gonna be teaching the middle school kids how to work on scheduling and how to use your time and plan and do that kind of stuff. Which I think is amazing, cause they all need that.
No, it's great. And I'm really glad they built in more um support, flex blocks and support time. I know that was a big priority and important to. The community and and just, you know, wanting kids to feel there's some kind of um relief to the high pressure rigor. And the stress of the academics to have, you know, additional support is really important. Um and the other thing I would just comment on, I think Dominic kind of hit upon it a little bit. But just to piggyback, um the thing that I I guess gave me anxiety in having kids at Masco, one graduated, one there now. Is having less time to transition and I would just hope that um, you know, with this new change. Which I think is, you know, good to embrace change when we feel like it's going to improve things. Also to have the mindset among the teaching staff to be very flexible if a student walks in three minutes late to a class. You know, that there's a different change in mindset that comes along with that as well, because there's gonna be more travel time. So just put that out there.
Thank you. Carolyn.
Um, I just wanted to also talk about the other goal when we were negotiating the teacher's contract. Was to allow schedule flexibility for more professional development time. And I'm kind of just catching up on the schedule that was released because I didn't look at the the one that was leaked. Um but the um Wednesday early release, I don't know if people have seen that, but that is going to provide for regular. Professional development time, which is really key to us achieving vision twenty twenty-five, making changes. The flexible schedule or the schedule will also help get us there, help us start teaching more in a more. Current, appropriate way, but that PD time was very important um to me, so I'm glad that that's in here as well.
Thanks, yeah, just to um. Elaborate a little bit more. Right now, um it was a um. There was like two hours once a month-ish for professional development. So this allows for weekly. Um professional development, which from what I understand, um you really need it to be more regular to make headway with it. Um and you know, just since we're talking about a few things that we wanted to highlight, um having the win. In or the Masco block in the day, every day is much more equitable for one for, rather than having after-school help after school. Um and some students can't get rides home. So this way, everybody has equal ask access. And it's also a great place for special ed to be getting sus- support rather than being pulled from um specials. So it definitely is much more of an equitable uh schedule. And um, yeah, that's all. Anybody else? Okay, so uh there might be some perception that we do something like vote on a schedule. We do not. And this is also on the administration. Uh so this was just really as an FYI for us. Um excite, excited report back of the report, the work that's being done all year. So. Let's see. Um, with um. Superintendent's update, just a couple things that were in that also. A big congratulations to the women's tennis team, first-time champions, state champions. That's very awesome. Um, we, as we have started doing in terms of um highlighting and congratulating our athletes. We will likely do the spring sports in the fall. Um, so I think that this is our first year really doing this with all the athletes, so we haven't had a spring sport one. But since they keep going, um I think the fall is the appropriate time. So we will welcome them all back. Who are who are around um them. So thank you to them. Um. And. There's a bunch of retiring staff, which if you look in Mike's blog, he has be like when they started and when they ended pictures. And it's just adorable. Um and I wanna congratulate everybody who's retiring this year, but a big. Extra special, um. Congratulations and uh to Patty Bullard, member of our team, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Um, she's been at the district for nine years. All right, got a marker in the background. Um I know she will uh be mess, she's been a great part of our team. Very calm. Reassuring presence at our meetings. Um she knows her stuff, and I'm so excited for her to retire. And enjoy all her grandbabies. Um we got to see a few of them. Bunch of them um at yesterday at her uh retirement reception. They're just a beautiful family, so I'm very excited for Patty. Um and I think that we all feel the same way. Okay. Okay, so next, going down on our agenda, faculty request for student enrollment, item G. Um. We used to get. These really thorough emails requesting this. It's something that the staff has to do before. Um I think the end of this month, and um through the union, they request if they have a s- have a. Child that they would like to attend Masco. And I know we used to get a whole story as to why, and then we told. People to stop doing that, that we just wanted to know, you know, the numbers, um because. That was really what was important, and we were getting lost in the stories um and not talking about the numbers. So this year, we have one teacher who is asking us to allow her. Entering eighth grade child um into the district. So we, as a school committee, can say yea or nay. Um, don't have much more information about why, but it's just one student and will not change anything. Mike has said he supports this move. So I don't know if anybody has any comments. Costa, oh, I don't have to unmute you. Okay.
Uh, I, those of you who have been on the committee for a while know that I. Steadfastly and adamantly am opposed to these um requests. Because with a little planning and some sacrifice. On the parent's part, they could make it possible for their students, for their children to be students at Masco. Now, given, you know, my personal history, it would be. It's an unthinkable thing for me to vote yes on any of these.
There's only one student, so on this, not on these, but you're talking about in the future as well.
And in the past, I've always voted against them and I all.
Okay, thank you. So I'm not gonna ask you to make the motion. Um, Zilly.
Well, I was gonna make a motion to approve it.
Carolyn's gonna second. Does anybody else um wanna have a discussion on this?
Yeah, I could just um just say a few words about this. Um I guess I'm. I'm sort of conflicted a little bit, because on the one hand, I think that, yes, it's only one and and. Um if it increases goodwill with the faculty, then that's and that's a good thing. But at the same time, I know that um we've had diminishing. Um at least over a substantial period of time, there's been uh diminishing enrollment and the topic of. Uh are we appropriately staffed or the, with the with the number of kids that that were served. Um and and even potentially even adding one uh might affect that, that that calculation. Um so, um, I don't know, I'm I'm. I'm just, I'm just trying to make my mind up quickly, but I'm probably gonna vote no on this one.
Trevor?
I just have a question, cause I've never liked sat through one of these. Um is this like school choice? Where the money's to follow the student or no?
No, it's it's not, um. It is not. So the student, like, so in the school choice that we opened up was.
Grade nine.
It was just grade nine. Um. Yeah, for grade.
But also, keep in mind that the marginal cost of one additional student is frankly negligible.
Yeah, it's it would be zero, but um because the teachers are there, it's not, you're not changing the class size or anything substantially. Um so yeah, I had asked about where we were at for school choice. Um and we have more than. We have more applicants than we do have seats. So I thought that that was an interesting um. An interesting thing just to know. Um but that is for kids going into grade nine, this is for an eighth grader. Um and we don't get reimbursement for it. You good?
Um, if I could, another one. How many teachers' kits do we already have? I would just feel like, I feel like if the committee in the past voted. Yes, 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 on every single request, I don't see how they could turn around for this one and say no, but I know circumstances change. Whatnot, but I was just wondering if you had a number of teachers' kits already at the school.
That's a good question, and people have been on with me or longer. I I don't think we've had anybody come in in the past couple of years. And I think, I feel like right when I started, um there was a couple, it's it's always been like two, one or two per year. Costa, do you have numbers?
Yeah. You know, Costa has numbers. Not me.
This, you know, provision has been, you know, in the teacher contract for many years. And for many years, the committee always said no. It even said no. Uh to Darrell Lockwood when he was superintendent and wanted his daughters to attend the school. It changed when, you know, Kevin Lyons was superintendent. And uh the idea behind, you know, you know, letting, you know, faculty students. And was, you know, building with will. But at that same time, the committee, you know, was, you know. Exploring uh a later start time and all the good. Supposed goodwill that we got by admitting these students, but you know, the teachers didn't even want to discuss. A later start time. So I don't think it buys you goodwill. And the eighth grade is. A big grade, so adding one more to an already big grade. Was probably not a wise thing to do.
It's not, Costa, it's not the current eighth grade, it's the rising eighth graders.
Which is not as, not the bubble, not the big one.
Yes, right. But thank you. So I feel like, I don't know, Carolyn, are you coming coming in with a little more history also?
Yeah, what I I do remember everything that Costa said, and I also remember um like historically, we. Like way back, had too many kids in the school. Uh when our general accepting of teachers started. Was when enrollment was dropping. In fact, I remember the first time we had a big discussion of enrollment dropping. And then, and then a teacher asked if one of, if they could bring one of their children in, and it, to me, it seemed completely uh two-faced. To say, no, we don't have room when we acknowledge that we have room. Um so to me, that was the biggest change that happened. I think school choice is the lever that we have to determine, like, just filling those empty seats, right? That's, we had that discussion when we determined how many students we want to let in through school choice, and we selected ninth grade as having. A a good place to put kids in, and they do come with money. Um I do not think. Having a t- you know, one more student in any grade has any effect on how we analyze our enrollment. Or determine how many staff we have. And I do think it is a nice thing to do to accept. As as a child of one of our faculty, and while we may not get the goodwill of the whole union, I think we will get it of that teacher. And I cannot think of a reason not to accept the student.
Thank you. Um, I will say, while I was handing out uh diplomas, that I'm pretty sure I handed. One to a faculty member's kid who we let in and um which was a story that I was very, you know. Happy to let their child in. So I know that we have one out now, so um but I feel like that was kind of the last time. When um. Like we, I, it's, I haven't talked about this for a few years.
Right.
So, um, and, yeah. Okay, Joe, hello.
Hi, I just have a quick question on this. Is this a one-time, yes? And then the student is admitted for the rest of their high school career?
Correct.
Is that how it works?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as the uh her, the parent is a, is employed at the school.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dominic, Dominic looks deep in thoughts.
Um, I think this was answered, but maybe not. How, okay, just going back and setting precedence, I mean, how, so this is strictly, this is strictly up to the school committee. And that's how it's always been, it's just a vote either yes or no. And we we just take the situation and determine where we are. As a student body or where that upcoming class is, am I correct?
Absolutely.
So I think it's important for us, I mean, if we're, if that's how we're, we voted in the past. I think we need to look at that and decide if that's how we're going to move forward. I do also agree from the fiscal responsibility from Costa's point. I mean, okay, yes, it's only one, fine. But what if, what if something happens and there's five teachers? And they all ask that same year, how do we pick and choose? What kind of position does that put us in? Uh obviously, it's, you know, it's, it's hard for that to happen, or maybe it's impossible, but who knows? So where does that put us as far as being consistent and fair?
I I think, I I think that's why we have to do it every year, and you know, if we were hit with a year where there were five. And it was in a particularly large grade and five would make a difference, then then, you know. Then we would have to use that information. Right now, the information in front of us is that it's one going into um. The current seventh grade class will be eighth graders next year, and we know that it will not make a diff- a difference. Um, it's, you know, in their contract to, that they have to ask by the end of this month, and so the. The union has done what they're supposed to do, and then it's up to us.
Okay.
So we we did ask to get rid of the personal information um and to make this easier. So that it's just a numbers game to us. Cause there was a lot of heartstrings being tugged, if I recall. Because there was a lot of heartstrings being tugged, if I recall. Bill?
Did someone move this question?
Yes, yeah, Zilly's moved and Carolyn second. And if we're ready, we can take a vote unless you have another discussion point to it.
Nope, ready to vote.
Well, then why don't you be the first to vote?
Yes.
Costa?
No.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So that is ten in favor, one no, which passes. So, thank you, everyone. Let's see, we're going to ratifying the tentative agreement with the Mascanama Association of Professional Administrators. So, um, there is a link to this in the agenda. We have discussed this a few times. Um, we discussed it in an open meeting. Can anybody verify if we've discussed this enough in meeting? Well, let's just give a quick overview, given that none of us are 100% that sure. But first of all, this was a few month process, very positive all along. The first number, one, two, three, four points are housekeeping, easy changes. Then number five was pretty big, where we removed the times of the day and feel like they are going to complete their professional responsibilities as as they see fit. Number six, where I think they were adding in this these positions that therefore are these roles, I guess, that are counted as point two or point three full-time equivalent in terms of the amount of classes that the person in that role should teach. Tuition reimbursement being increased from 200, of course, to 500, of course. And then the salary scale, 2.25 increase year one, two percent year two, and two percent again year three. So, do I have a motion? Or any discussion?
I move to accept the contract between with the Mascanama Association Professional Administrators.
Okay.
A second.
Carolyn seconds. I'm gonna do a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Tasha's a yes, so all in favor of that contract. Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay, now we're going to go on to I, which is ratifying the tentative agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. AFL-CIO, State Council 93, Local 939. Big name. This is the contract with the MPFTs. Mike and Jeff worked on this one with them on our behalf.
Asha, can you just, for the people who are listening, can you just confirm what MPFT means or just define it?
Multi-purpose field technician. Did I get it right?
I think so.
These are the people that
Close enough.
It's facility technician.
Facility? What did I say? Field? Well, they do. I mean, that is something that they can work on. They they're basically, they do everything at our school.
Fossils and other other words that begin with that.
Floors.
The faucet technicians. So it doesn't actually say that here, but, um. Okay, so let's see, this one talks about the effective date, July 1st, a grievance and arbitration procedure. Adding Juneteenth to the list of approved holidays and aligned with the school having that as a approved holiday. Snow days, number four, and it was added in because they realized with COVID being in a state of emergency. So the sentence was added due to inclement weather after if there's a state of emergency, something about whether or not they would be asked to show up to work. And oh, look right there, multi-purpose facility technician wage. So there you go, wage schedule. And their increases similar to the professional administrators were two and a half, two and two. So do I have a motion for that one?
I'll move that.
Zilly makes motion.
I'll second.
Carolyn, seconding it. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to correct, it's 2.25, two and two.
Oh, sorry.
Just for the record, yep.
Thank you. Um, okay, Bill?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tasha's a yes. Did I miss anybody? No. Okay, so I'll prove that. Thank you everybody who worked through that one. And hopefully I said 2.25 other professional administrators also, and I'm not screwing up numbers. Okay, number J. This is a vote to approve a memorandum of understanding between us and the teacher association where they had filed a complaint for unfair labor practice. And we have agreed to resolve this complaint.
By jointly attending training.
Right, yeah, I'm just looking at what each point here is. The association and the committee mutually acknowledge their respective rights and obligations. Association and the committee agree to engage in one joint training session on the state collective bargaining law. The association and committee's bargaining teams are obligated to attend this training. Two-hour training shall be scheduled to occur approximately one month prior to the start of the party's next bargaining schedule. Association and committee agree that the association will select an attorney to conduct training with an attorney selected by the school committee. And that the association agrees to withdraw with prejudice within five business days of the execution of the agreement. And with prejudice means that they are unable to bring it up again. So this is the conclusion of that. So do we have a?
Motion to approve or accept?
Do I have a second?
A second, that's my job tonight.
You're the seconder? Okay, is there any further discussion on this? No, okay, starting with Bill?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And Tasha's a yes, so all in favor of that agreement. Okay, second meeting, letter K of our agenda, second reading of the policy revisions and review of section B minus the selected exclusions of BA, BB, AA, BBA slash BBB, PCA, BE, DB. Melissa, I can't even imagine all these letters just dancing around in your head. Yeah, there's a lot of them. So as a, you know, we had read through these or some of us had read through them for our last meeting, and we approved it. I think two people abstained. And through our policy, which is in this group that we're doing a second vote on, if it's not a unanimous first vote, then we have two votes on it. So right now we're on the second vote, I hope.
And the changes Make a motion to approve?
Yes.
So that we, you can still discuss, which is
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second, second.
Second, okay. And discussion, Trevor's hands is up.
Yeah, so I was reading through them and on policy BBC on page 12, it's the one about school committee members who move out of district or town.
Yeah.
And I was just thinking that we should say, take out the part where it says it says member move out of town or district. I think we should just leave it at town because say I move to Boxford, that's technically, I reading that, I feel like that's still in district. Where town would kind of just eliminate all of that confusion.
I think, Melissa, do you have a comment?
I have it in my notes as being deleted, so let me just pull it up.
That you had wanted to delete that?
That district is deleted, but I don't know.
That was on BBC, BBBC or?
Oh, BBC, page 12.
I think if they move that, I don't know if it's
Do you want to, is that something that we can approve of that change? Or do you need to ask or?
I think we have amend the motion.
Yeah, you can amend the motion, but then it has to be unanimous for this particular BBBC.
So maybe can we remove this?
Yeah, I think you have to remove that from the
So I'm I'm pulling my motion off the table. And I'm making a new motion to approve all with the exception of BBBC.
I'll second.
Okay, um. Okay, Trevor? I'm voting. I'm having a hard time with words right now. Your vote?
Yes.
Sorry, Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
William? Bill?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic, oh, you're Dominic?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
And Tasha's a yes.
Oh, yes. Yes, for me.
Joe, oh, sorry. I didn't wait for your answer. Did we, okay, so Melissa, you're pulling that one out and correcting it for our next one? Or can we vote on it corrected now?
We can vote on it corrected now if it's unanimous, if anyone stains or doesn't agree. So I guess the motion on the table is to accept BBVC. But in the second paragraph, delete the word or district.
That will be the motion on the table when once it's made. Is that what you're making?
Yeah, that would be.
I'll second that.
I guess, I guess my one question, and I don't know if it needs to be explored. I think district refers to the Mascanama District, but and we don't vote in towns. Never mind. Stream, stream, sorry, apologize. I think we can delete or district and it would be fine.
I mean, if we if we if we find out later that for some reason that is wrong, we can address it then.
Exactly.
I think it makes sense to us that you were you were elected by town. If you move out of that town, you live in the district.
Yeah.
I think to Melissa's point, the only technical question could be we serve the district, right? We're elected by the town. So the question could be like, do you need to add language that says the town in which you were elected for the district in which you serve? Like it's
Pretty clear without it.
Things might come into play, but I'm comfortable voting for it with the amendment. And then if we, if MASC tells us we need to adjust it, we can.
And I completely understand why many of you may move to Boxford out of the towns that you're
Here you have a new rotary.
For our great library, yeah. So is there a motion or not?
Yeah, I think Melissa made the motion and I believe
Bill?
Bill?
Seconded it.
Or William. Okay, just want to make sure that that's clear. Okay, roll calls. Trevor?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tasha's a yes, so it moved with passed unanimously, so we're all good. Okay. Excellent. So typically, or to give a little history, members of the budget subcommittee have always signed all the warrants and bills for the school. And a few years back, instead of just saying it was anybody, we designated one person to do it. Just because sometimes if there's too many people, it becomes confusing and the chair can always help. So as of now, being the past chair of the budget subcommittee, I continue to sign the bills. So because we're not having a budget subcommittee meeting in the nearest future, we want to designate somebody to sign the bills going forward. Usually every other week on a Tuesday, that typically has aligned with our planning meetings, which makes it easy if you are a chair or vice chair. Vice chair being the chair of the budget subcommittee, if he or she is willing to take on that role would be a logical person to do it, but we don't need always to have logic, so.
But we do want to have more than one person, right? I mean, I just recall that someone goes on vacation or something.
I think the chair, the chair.
The chair.
Chair. Yeah, I mean, I feel like I've been doing this for
I think it's three years, two or three years, Tasha. Thank you.
It's it's been me for two or three years?
Yeah.
Oh, God, okay.
So do we just, do we just, do we just need people from the I don't know what that was. Do we just need people from the budget subcommittee to be able to be there on Tuesday?
Yeah, so we get an email, they go in and sign. And, yeah.
And you read, so it's a big pile. I just want to say it's not just signing. If the bills are big, you should be looking at what they are. Not
There's a big, yeah, yeah. You kind of scan through and see what's in there. You know, some are easy and they're salaries. And then some's easier, like more, you know, a whole bunch of stuff. It's all piles. There's typically like seven, eight things to sign. But yes, Carolyn is right.
You check invoices.
If you're on the budget committee, what's helpful about that, especially if it's your second go around, but even if it's your first, you you do know about the budget or it's I feel like it works well with someone from the budget side.
I'm a half a mile away, so I'd be happy to dive in.
Okay. Does
I'm happy, I'm happy to be a backup to Dominic.
Bill, are you on budget?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so Dominic and Bill, and then I'm a backup to the backup. But what we'll have that Um, but what we'll have, uh, Becca in the front office um always sends an email, and so I'll have her just send it to both of you and then reply all. And um, this is an opportunity that you can reply all and just say, I got it, or I need help or whatever.
Because they definitely need, you can't not let them get signed. It stops everything.
Yeah, they need to be signed on that day or the next day um in emergency situations. Um, I'm sorry, can you just hold on one second while I just do a?
Thank you both for volunteering to do that because I could do it, but it would, it would be much better if someone else could do it.
Um, so we need to, um, I think I'm going to consider you guys like as co's. And Dominic, if you want to take the lead in responding or however it goes, but um
Fair enough.
We're gonna um make a motion to um to accept Dominic and Bill as our signees for the um bills and warrants and all of that. And so I'll do a roll call vote for that. So starting with Trevor. Oh, just a minute, we need an emotion, sorry.
I'm just moving what you just said.
Okay, so Zilly made the motion and somebody. I'm gonna give it to Joe. He hasn't had one yet. Joe, Joe's got the second there. Um, okay, roll call, Trevor?
Yes.
Costa? Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so thank you to Dominic and Bill for doing that for us. Appreciate it. Okay, um, hey, going through subcommittee reports. Patty, community relations.
Uh, yeah, so uh we had our Small Town Hero Awards uh ceremony last week and on the sixteenth in the cafeteria, in the uh auditorium, and it was, it was just wonderful. It was like a, just a very heartwarming event. Um, and Zilly had joined. And just watching all of the, the nominees, the award recipients and their families, and there were tears of joy uh from the families that were fearing why um, you know, their person was nominated and I just um, I think it's a wonderful thing to continue, wonderful tradition to continue. It, in some ways, I think it felt like a new tradition because it was in person this year. And I think uh the student council did an amazing job and showed great leadership in their planning and organization and their communication with me and with others and um, and Ben Hancha kind of led the charge. So I look forward to continuing that next year. It was definitely a light in the darkness.
It's awesome, something the committee can definitely use.
Um, and then just to follow up to Tasha with community relations, we will have the meeting next week. Um, and we do have that extended time for community feedback that we've added in there.
Thank you. Thanks, Patty. Zilly, were you saying something?
I was just gonna say that Patty closed that with a killer quote that I loved, but then I couldn't find it. I don't know if you remember it, but anyway, it was. So then I kind of, you can, you can ignore me. I love the quote. Patty kind of ended the night. The student council did the whole thing, but then Patty closed the show with a really nice quote.
I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, sorry.
But um I did, we did put it on the, the post uh with the picture of all the recipients, so. Um, no, it was just nice to see everyone come together. And it was such a range of award recipients, which I thought was really cool as well. It wasn't like, you know, all similar reasons. They were all very different reasons for the positive impact that these members of the committee had, so.
Some of the way it's set up, that each group in school gets a, gets a person. So the range of groups, you know, gets um, I, I would assume a range of recipients.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there was one recipient that up there, the code, he's a coach and the entire um team came to, to cheer him on. It's just amazing, so.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so that's for community relations. Budget, I'm gonna assume that um we don't have anything.
Yeah, we haven't met. No, I did want to um just say, I think in the past, my understanding as a budget has started meeting in the fall. I was gonna contact Bill and Dominic to see if they, if you, if we should have a meeting over the summer just to sort of get, you know, get our agenda together and, or um talk about what we want to accomplish next year um or this year. So I'll reach out to you both by email.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. That's a great idea, Terry. Um, anti-racism, Bill?
Yeah, I haven't scheduled the meeting yet, uh but um certainly my intention to do so. So I'll be sending uh uh something, something out to the city members to get some possible dates. So we can do that over the next, uh, over the next month.
Um, policy, Melissa?
Um, we will have a meeting on July, oh gosh, on fifteen, the Friday, Friday? No, it's a Wednesday.
Thirteenth, I think.
Thirteen, thirteen. And it'll be a lunchtime meeting with Dorothy Presser.
And we're doing some training, right?
Next.
Yes, there's one, a mass training is.
On Wednesday?
On Wednesday, the twenty ninth, yeah.
At noon.
And I just, just noticed, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the makeup of the budget subcommittee is the same as the anti-racism subcommittee. Tuck myself, Dominic and Terry. Just a fun fact.
I hadn't noticed that.
Maybe, maybe during the budget, we're, we can do a joint meeting.
Back to back. It's a good idea. Uh, what was I gonna say? Tell me about the um training that you guys are doing, the policy committee?
It's a M A S C training about policy manuals, right?
It's a workshop. Yeah, it's about, it's about updating policy manuals.
Interesting. Awesome. Thank you guys for doing that. Okay, negotiations. We're done. I think that that's, we're done for um uh, for negotiations for um this year. And maybe for the coming year, so. How about liaison updates?
I I attended the selectman meeting um last week, I believe, just to introduce myself. Uh, I did call attention to the um Small Town Heroes uh event. And just to, you know, make sure that the doors open uh for information both ways. So I'll continue to do that for Middleton.
Thank you, Dominic. Trevor?
I have a question, and I don't know if Dominic, or did we ever reach out to Middleton, to the police chief at all about the whole security team and all that, or no?
I think Costa brought that up.
Yeah. Costa had a, had, I think, answered that.
I know that's why the SRO wasn't there, but I didn't know if the chief would have wanted to play a bigger role in the security team.
Well, I think the issue is that they need to have a, an officer trained. Because the person that was trained, obviously, has been out on disability, so assuming that that person isn't uh available or will be available, uh, we need to, really, you know, they need to make, uh, they need to retrain or train someone new to fill that position.
Yeah, and you know, the issue is being discussed, you know, inside our acts.
Thank you.
Okay, any other liaisoning things? Okay, um, then our consent agenda includes of the approval of the May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes and warrants of one million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-two cents. That was nine that have been signed since May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a?
There's a typo on the warrant, Tasha.
Okay.
It says it's six spelled out and it should be nine.
Does that matter? Well, let's just say, do I have to pull that out?
Amendment. Yeah, we can pull it out and amend it.
Okay, so our consent agenda, we're gonna um, because nobody made the motion. Thanks for picking that up, Melissa.
I'll approve just the minutes.
Okay, second on the minutes?
I'll second.
I think Terry got that one first. Everybody at once. Okay, roll call on the minutes. Trevor?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Tasha's a yes, so all approved on the minutes. Um. Approving the the um warrants in the amount read before with the change that it's the following nine warrants, spelled out N I N E, number nine. Um, do I have a motion on that?
I'll move.
Melissa's making that motion, I'm making that motion?
I'll second.
Dominic seconding. Roll call vote, starting with Trevor?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tasha's a yes, so I'm in favor of the amended warrants. Um, and that concludes this meeting. Um.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Um.
I'll second.
Dominic seconds. Terry, uh, Terry makes a motion, so one more time. Trevor?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Zilly?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Natasha's a yes. Thank you all for your patience. I appreciate it. Um, you all have a peaceful evening and rest of the week. Thank you.
You.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.